We call the new order. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just order business approval, now if you have a motion. Is motion approved, your second?
Second.
Second, any questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all carries. Bills?
Approved, approved.
Approved, approved. Is your second?
Second.
That was second, any questions? Comments? Go call.
Brett?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Bolson?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye. My natural, Dandy? And then, they know that.
It's a new year.
New year.
Everybody did. Did fairly well. With their budgets.
Do you tell me it's back the same?
Yep. So, fresh start.
Any other questions?
Most are approved.
Yeah, most are approved, if I answer your question, second. Is it, there is second? Who do you like calling that? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Charge of checks. Have a copy, I guess.
Most are approved.
Okay, you have a motion to approve, charge of checks, your second?
Second.
Second? Other questions? Go call.
Bolson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Bolson, Rowan.
Aye. Approval of agenda, any changes?
Most are approved.
Okay, you have a motion to approve?
Second.
You have a second, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of year-end budget amendments. Any comments on that, or, can we go right, Dandy?
One, one is your revenue, and then, one is your expenditure, so, I guess, everyone did.
Good.
Everyone did. Really. Really good. Made less work for me.
Okay, everything went good, huh?
Yep.
Question from the commission? Comments?
Looks good, I need to approve the year-end budget adjustments.
You have a motion to approve the year-end budget amendments? Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. First through your business. Motion, does that what you do?
Yes.
Okay, we need the, uh, motion on the discussion of your honor.
I'll take this up. I'll make the motion, I think Terry Ward being on all matters pertaining to the various office undertakings unless authority is granted to an individual member of the commission to act or report, and if the county auditor is authorized to pay all regular bills such as monthly salaries, lights, heat, water, telephone bills, uh, with discounts, bills with discounts, and union service bills when received.
Okay, who's second on that?
Second.
Okay, Mark. All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Who wants to read the second one? Who wants to make that motion?
Well, this is the opportunity, if you want that dollar amount changed. You know? When department heads want, you know, wanna buy some, you know, thousand dollars anymore.
That number's not into the audit procedures at all, is it? That's just on the mixed asset list.
Yep.
Personally, I think it should be more. And we already approved your budget for the year. And generally, those items are already listed in there, budget for the previous, for the year.
What dollar amount are you thinking of then, Jeff?
Something more than a thousand bucks, I don't know about far anymore.
A dollar then, too?
I'd go, I'd go with two.
So, you're gonna make a motion?
Yep, I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion on the second on that? I think there should be no problem there, so. All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, who wants to third one? Who wants to make the motion carry?
I'll make that motion, that we, uh, Ramsey National Bank and Trust, Bremer Bank and Western State Bank, all Devils Lake, designated depositories for Ramsey County.
Second.
Okay, who wants the second? And? Who wants to make the motion to have the treasurer authorize the investment county funds?
We should go with the one.
Oh, we should go with that one. All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Pardon me. I would go with the fourth one. Treasurer's office.
I'll make a motion to approve Ramsey County treasurer be authorized to invest county funds as soon as available into cash and investments when necessary.
Okay, who wants to take the second?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Six assets, just set them on.
Is that one five, though?
Yep, that must've stayed at five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the one on five, though, as well as for the counties to assess it.
Okay.
Second.
Only have a second? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Pledge of, go ahead.
Last one will be, uh, will be at the end, right?
Oh, we're having to get up to that?
Yep, 'cause we didn't get all the stuff from the banks, so.
We'll get the same one. I think we done there. That's all that, yeah.
Yep.
Bill?
Morning.
How you doing?
Good. I think. I've been out doing my morning walks, I walk every morning, three mile, half, and two miles in the gym, plus, wire headphones. Two things, uh, just to let you know that our office is really moving along very nice with the additions and changes that we've made. Uh, I see they've been hiring around the state some of their CW positions that it had talked about, so, we should be in line for the spring. Uh, hoping maybe a little sooner. And just a reminder that roundup is next week. Tuesday, Wednesday, please come and join us, see what goes on, uh, some of the changes we've made, come and eat with us, we got a lot of food to eat, every, every year, we have plenty. So, we got speakers coming in, uh, probably our, our highest, um, esteemed presentation will be from Elaine Fries from Boise, Manitoba, and she'll be talking on transition, and how often do we hear people talk about, uh, the estate wasn't distributed very fairly? That's what she's gonna talk about, is fairness. So, here's an opportunity, if you got people in the community who wanna come and listen, they're very welcome to, it's not just for eight producers, or whoever might come.
What time is she off?
She'd be at, she's at two thirty or three o'clock. I, I have my agenda, but, I'd have to Monday here too, I'm sorry, Tuesday afternoon. I'd be there at two thirty just to, I could come back and tell you the exact time if you want me to, but-
No, that's fine.
I didn't bring that agenda along, I should've, but is, you were breezing out one, right? Okay. Yep. But the office is moving along very nice. Lauren's been a great addition to the office, and Rachel's moving along, we're doing stuff with, stuff that, hopefully, I would have to ask Cindy actually to slow down just a little bit, because she's a county employee. Uh, we gotta be careful about comp time or overtime. And she doesn't want overtime, and if you give her comp time, she'll be gone more than she'll be in the office, so, you gotta be a little bit careful with that too, but she's really moving along very nicely, and same with Sarah. Questions? Comments? Happy to hear.
Happy to hear.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
See you Tuesday.
Yeah. Keep calling.
Can you use the stand? I know, I let, you know, I want you to be able to see me. So, um, I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority, um, and today, I'm here to ask you, um, we are looking at, uh, changing our name. Um, about fifteen years ago, we started managing the Housing Authority up in Cavalier County, and then, about probably five years ago, we started managing the Housing Authority in Cooperstown, which is Nelson, Griggs, and Steel. So, what happened is, with all the changes in HUD, HUD is trying to basically change our funding and everything, and so, it's become more cost-effective to combine housing authorities. And so, effective September first, uh, we did transfer the programs of Cooperstown Housing and Cavalier County into our Housing Authority, so now, our jurisdiction is over the five counties. Um, and so, in doing that, I needed to let them know that we're not just Ramsey County, and so, we want to change our name, um, to reflect that we're multi-jurisdictional now, and so, what I wanna change the name to is North Central Housing Authority. And because you are our governing board, um, I need to get approval from you, basically, I need a resolution saying that, um, you're willing to let us change the name, and then, I also need a letter signed by the auditor. And those are things that I need to turn into IRS, to get that stuff changed.
Which counties now, Cavalier or Ramsey, which ones?
Ramsey, Cavalier, Nelson, Griggs, and Steel.
Have you talked with them?
Yes.
What reception did you get there?
They are all for it. Um, and in fact, when we did that, um, that's another thing that I need to, um, get done today, when we combined housing authorities, the state legislature did open, it changed our law, saying we could have more board members on our board, we used to be restricted to five. Um, when we started wanting to consolidate, uh, we needed more board members, because the counties, what their issue was, is that they still wanted representation. And I get that, you know? And so, part of the agreement was that they would get represented, representation on our board, and then, we would also change our name, so that they wouldn't, we wouldn't just be known as Ramsey County. Um, so, I have spoke with all of them, they know this is coming, they're very open to it. Our board will be seven members. Right now, I'm only at, Cooperstown doesn't have theirs on yet. Um, in the next three months, I expect them to be on the board. Right now, Cavalier County has sent down, um, Stanley Dick to be their representation, um, so, I do need the approval for that, because that's still in state law. They can, they decide who they want to send, and then, you guys will have to approve that, who's on our board, just like anybody else.
Will that, will that remain true after, after we change over to the new name and, and the new structure? Will we still be approving all of the members from other counties?
Yes. Yes, it changes nothing about how, um, Ramsey County has ever participated, it's just the name changed.
It's almost, excuse me, it's almost like a double appointment, so, the other, the county that is appointing somebody has to essentially approve it, and then, we have to approve it.
Who's on there from Ramsey?
Um, yeah, myself, and then, we have, uh, Cale Strummy, um, Ange Holtz, um, Renee Agdall, um, Rodden Friday, are the five from Ramsey, and then, we added in Stan now, and then, whenever the other three counties, uh, make their decision, though, let somebody else swap seven.
So, you're gonna have quite a large board?
Well, it would be seven.
Not huge.
Because Cooperstown Housing Authority, those three counties are considered one.
Bill is, yeah, Bill is said one.
Yes, so those are said one.
Nelson, Griggs, and Steel.
Nelson, Griggs, and Steel are one.
Yeah, they, they, they were consolidated previously to, uh, us essentially running the programs, well.
Most of the work you do for, is Ramsey then?
Uh, yes.
What percentage would you say?
Um, for Ramsey County, we have eighty-six public housing units.
But I mean, of all the work you do, what's the percentage?
Probably, uh, two-thirds of our stuff is in Ramsey. Yep.
Lot of the other programs in the other counties are the section eight one, where you're just working with, uh, like, with landowners, or with property owners, and helping with Ramsey, and like that, so.
There's a lot of work within doubles like that.
The only thing that's changed in the combining is that we did have to change our waiting lists, and, um, so, 'cause we work strictly from a waiting list, and their counties don't have very much on the waiting list, and so, when we combined, I had to give them preference on the waiting list, so, when anybody applies from there, they will pop to the top of the list above Ramsey County, because that was one of their concerns, is that when they combine, that we'll just take all the vouchers and use them in Devil's Lake. You know? It's a valid concern, we've seen it in the big towns, and to me, you need to keep rural going. And so, it really doesn't affect Ramsey County at all, because they have such a low number, it's one or two, you know? You put them on, and basically, it helps Ramsey County, because if they're, they can't use all their funds up there, Ramsey can use them now. We used to have to pour money back and forth and all around, and it was just an accounting nightmare. And so, that's why we combined, so that we have one large pot to use over the five counties. And so, now, it's just technicality of changing a name, so that we are multi-jurisdictional.
What influence does the state have over this, are they encouraging you to do this? You know, combining?
The state doesn't care.
They don't care?
No, they don't care one way or the other.
What's the name of your director on the state? Who oversees you?
I, I'm not overseen by the state.
What do you like?
We are federal.
Okay.
So, we work with HUD.
The money don't come through the state then?
No.
No.
We have nothing to do with the state.
So, is it federal block grants that come directly to, to the housing authority, is that how you hear it?
They are, um, they're, it's not block grants.
It's like direct usage, almost.
Yeah.
Oh, so like, do you, so you bill for services rendered back to the, that's?
No, we get, um, operating funds, our public housing gets operating funds and capital funds, and then, our section eight just, um, it's a program across the country, and so, there is just, we get a very minute amount to use for that, and our funding has dropped, they're only funding us at, um, about eighty percent.
Eighty percent? Eighty.
Eighty.
Eighty percent of the section eight, yeah, and then, uh, the, the, it's two programs, section eight, and then, there's the public housing, and the public housing is a mix of some federal dollars for capital improvements, but a lot of it is balanced on, obviously, you collect, right? So, that's kinda how that's run, but.
We get the lesson on all it works today.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, we need a resolution then for the name change, and then, we have to approve changing the board size, or just allowing Stan to sit on the board?
Just allowing Stan to sit on the board.
Well, uh, the name change, just for information sake, in our last meeting, uh, our full board approved it, and then, so, we're not a problem with it, we thought it was reasonable, so. I guess I'll make the motion, and then, we draft a resolution, uh, approving, uh, a name change to North Central Housing Authority, and allowing, uh, the auditor to sign it.
Okay, motion does that affect, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anyone wanna make a motion, somebody wanna make a motion for Stan to get on this board?
So moved.
Favor of motion, and a second on that? Any other questions? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into new business, I guess? Go over, crowd will commit. There's a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Google Homestead credit debate?
So moved.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mileage increase to fifty-eight cents?
It was point five three five, and it's going to fifty-eight cents.
Is it gas involved or anything? No, not, 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 but I find it amusing that they've got the charter lease original aircraft on there, so, are we gonna set that one to, to use their, their own home?
Yeah, right.
I'll make a motion that we move, uh, to the, state, uh, state rate of fifty-eight cents.
Okay, we have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We have our end major commission leading governor can't agree, we need that, we need that charter plane.
It's eighty-seven cents a pound on the, please. Approval of year-end transfers.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the year-end transfers, there's a second?
Yep, second.
Second? Any, uh, questions about that? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations? Yeah, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, thank you, um, I'm Dennis Miller, I'm from Cato Township, and, uh, I serve on the township board, and I'm also past president of the township officers, um, this is an issue that's been going on for probably fifteen years, and I discussed it with Kevin, um, about our road blading, and probably three years ago, he said, um, I'll try to, uh, uh, repeat what he said, "Yeah, yeah, 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 I'll see you again next year." And, um, the issue is, is that, uh, we pay for six bladings a year, and I haven't kept officially track of that, but if we get three bladings, we're fortunate. And if he puts the blade down, when he blades, I mean, we're fortunate then, I mean, this, this year, this past summer, I, I, we actually, I felt pretty good, 'cause we got two blades that were, I mean, he actually moved some gravel, and I mean, what's happening is, our roads are narrowing up, and, um, so, when, when I go down with my seven-foot mower, there's a lot of places, I don't even reach the end of the road bed, 'cause, uh, when he does blade, he avoids every blade of grass, and with these wet years, the grass keeps growing, and the road gets, well, what's happening, um, is that, when I mow my seven feet, there's cattails and whatever, six feet tall in the ditch that I can't get in it. My wife and I came home, um, Sunday night, well, eleven o'clock, we came from Perom, and it, we shouldn't have been out then, but, I had, I clean my roads with my snowblower, sometimes to go from pavement to pavement, I back up ten miles. And I don't appreciate that, but the reason I do that is that our blade man will not put the wing down, and my brother-in-law was riding with me one time, and, uh, it happened, we were following the blade as he's cleaning our road, and there will be five-foot snowbanks there, 'cause he, he uses his mold board and the maincater, not the wing, and it used to be, I guess we got spoiled, when the old-time operators are there, they, it was like they were having fun, they put the wing down, go fifteen miles an hour, and shoot the snow fifty feet in the air, and if they, you know, if it was too deep, they'd sometimes turn around and, and go back and forth three times in those spots, and, and, um, when I, when I was with the township officers, I, I would go to the state township meetings, and Denise Brown from LTAP was there, uh, whom I understand that the counties hired to train our operator, and I said, "Mr. Ramsey County, send their people to get trained," and she said, "Oh, yeah, Ramsey County's one of the best." And I said, "Do they train them to put the blade down, and how to use the wing, and, as far as I know," she said. So, so there is something happening, um, it, in talking with other townships, it seems to be just our district, there are, um, districts in Ramsey County that they're very happy with, um, very happy with the maintaining, but it's a matter of life and death, when my wife and I came home Sunday night, we hit the ditch, we hit a snowbank, um, twisted the pickup around, yanked the, um, uh, crazy belt, serpentine belt, nearly off the front of my pickup, and, and, um, we, we've gone through times where, um, the mail won't even come for a whole week, 'cause, 'cause they won't blade our road, and, and we don't go on the township, you know, just to let them blade when they want to, on the township schedule, we, we go on a will call, only because we're afraid of, you know, if they get out there with their mold board, put up that berm on the side of the road, I mean, it's toast for the end of the year, and, so, I gotta go out there and blow the snow off myself, and Kevin, as much as said, "Oh, we really appreciate the farmers that do that," but, you know? I, I just find it appalling that, I see as a budget that, you know, we get new blades every, three new blades every, how many years, and yet, the operator doesn't, um, you know, buy a hundred thousand dollar tractor and put a front-end snowblower on it, if that's all they're gonna do, and at least make it safe for us, and don't build, uh, snow dams, and, and, so, anyway, I, I just, um, I tried to put the serpentine belt on my pickup yesterday, and my hands hurt, and I didn't get it on right, but, anyway, thanks for listening, and I don't know if anything can be done, because I've talked to Kevin, um, annually, and we talk to him as the Ramsey County Township Officers Association, we meet with them occasionally, and, and, it just, I, I honestly don't know what it will take, but I mean, I'm at wits' end, and, and, you know, I don't like, you know, when the snow blows around either, but, um, if they would take the wing, like, we, I went in this fall, and I said, "We got a few snowbanks, but if you put the wing down, he can get those cattails knocked down, and, uh, keep them from holding snow," and same thing, he goes out and, um, uses a mold board and puts up a berm on the side of the road, and thankfully, had a few nice days to melt it down again, but, I mean, I, I've blown my road out twice in the, in the last week, um, once, um, so we could get out to go to my wife's Christmas in Perom, and then, um, yesterday morning, I was out again, and, um, so, I appreciate your hearing me, and I don't know what can be done, but-
What's, what's the crowd like on your road? It's alright, not too high?
No, I, I would say it's adequate, I mean, it, it's a pretty decent.
But, and the grass is growing in on the shoulders?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, I, I walked out in those areas where the, the grass is coming in on the shoulders, and, I mean, there is windrows and gravel out there that, at one point, the blade did wide enough to push the gravel out, and, and, so, I'd, I'd appreciate any help, and, you know, I don't, you know, I know those blades are tough to drive, but you'd think, you know, any high school kid with a little bit of adventure in them, or any high school farm kid with a little bit of adventure in them could learn how to drive them after this number of years, so.
Well, we'll visit with Kevin about it, and see what we can do, I think we need to get the roads in shape in the summer, you know, like, get them wider than they're supposed to be, get them back to where they were, you know, we had an issue about this, this summer, and earlier, and we did get that road back in shape, and I've been over that road, it seemed to be a lot better.
Sure.
And so we'll bring this to his attention, and.
Okay.
Encourage him to.
Okay.
Work with you guys.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it very much.
So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
One more thing, my property taxes went up almost forty dollars this year to last year, so you'd expect that, you know, they leave donuts in your meal box or something with that, every time they go through, but.
Maybe apple turnovers, huh? Maybe apple turnovers we can leave.
Oh, hey, that would be more helpful.
Okay, any other visitors? I guess not, so. We'll go to the portfolios. Who wants to start? Mark, go ahead.
As we discussed yesterday, we're still waiting for our letter to rescind the closing order, other than that, everything's running pretty good, shares, permits, everything's pretty quiet.
So, you know, going into the new year, things are. Pretty quiet? Okay. Jeff?
Not a whole lot, both my portfolios are, are here, Bill reported earlier, Carrie's over there, I know she's busier than heck, and so I know Bill and, and that crew up there with the, we're on it next week, that's, that's a busy time for him, so. And I know Bill mentioned it, but we've always done that in the past, as long as we're as. We're on it, and I'm surprised you didn't ask, but I think that's.
He didn't watch.
Okay, yeah, so.
The weather's, weather's good, I guess it should be a big problem.
Yeah.
It's snowing, it's gotta be too.
Yeah.
Are we supposed to get some melt?
Possibly, yes, but it's not supposed to be definitely cold, it's snowing, so that's always a possibility.
Golly, it was warmer the first.
Yeah. Almost sixteen degrees warmer this morning than we were Tuesday morning or Monday morning, so, crazy.
Lucas. May have mentioned this before, I think I'll just mention it again in case I forgot, the library garden is paid for, I think I had to mention that. The other thing that happened was the library went and set up a nonprofit foundation to stand alongside the library and essentially act like a, an endowment given or entity, and without going into too much detail about it, there's a lot of money in there now, and within the first year, so I think we're gonna be able to set up a really nice perpetual endowment, add funds to the library that are not coming from either the county or the city, and I'm really pleased with that. I think as long as we don't dip too far into it, that can serve that library for basically forever, and I'm happy that that happened. At Dakota Prairie, I know that Terry London is still, you know, on his slow exit, I think that, that may be a little bit delayed, just I think there's a lot of work that he feels needs to get done before he does, seeing as I'm president of that now, I feel like I probably should keep you all apprised of that. But other than that, I don't think, oh, Lizzie Crosby had her first day at the Heritage Center as director yesterday. So if you get the chance, the place is fully operational again and open, and if you wanna stop in and say hello, and, you know, meet her, or if you'd like her to come and meet you somewhere, I'm sure she'd be happy to do that, so. Who are the hours, I don't know? I'll be back in just a second. I'll just pull it somewhere online.
Now.
That did.
That's it for me, yes, thanks.
Okay, Paula come in, County Housing Authority, obviously, it's pretty much what we handled with our last meeting, it seems as though since we did switch over from rolling the other counties in, so we're not having to roll money around, and stuff is way easier than it was before, so it seems to be everything's running fairly smoothly. I think Stan's gonna be a good addition to the board, he always adds a lot to anything you're in, so. For Devil's Lake, we had a meeting, oh gosh, it's been a few weeks now, we have an exact meeting next week, so keep working there. Trying to think if there's anything interesting that happened around social services board, B. Nothing. Not that I can remember, I guess.
We just talked about the state taking.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we did, we'll have that during our.
Yeah.
Be with legislators. She's back, I've had it afterwards. I think we'll be all right there. Remind him, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, we, I guess we haven't had social support, we just had a last meeting here, because it would have been the Monday before that one, so. Nothing new on that front, okay, just visiting the front about it, we just can't stand out of the legislative session, so. Other than that, I think it's, it's actually been pretty quiet.
Okay, what Mark touched on, old jail, and we're patiently waiting for the closure notice to be lifted, and I guess the state, we didn't figure they'd do anything during the holidays, I don't know, this week must be considered holidays so far, 'cause I haven't heard nothing yet, but if we don't hear something by next week, we probably gonna make a phone call or a trip to Bismarck, I think we've got enough, so. Try to break it to a head that way if you have to, so. But I think we'll hear by early next week, so. And everything seemed to be in place for the cameras and intercom system to go forward, we, merchants are anxiously waiting after the start this month, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And we're trying to get going by the ten, so. Be a lot of coordinating between them and the jail, and clean, you know, emptying a section to work on at that time, and security, and it's gonna be quite a process, I suppose, but, but they're ready to go.
So they said, wasn't it six months from start to finish is kind of their goal?
Yep.
Hopefully.
That's, that's.
So they don't crazy things happen.
I think maybe four should do it, maybe.
Yeah, I did have some contingency, 'cause, you know, I can't imagine working in jails and having to flip things around constantly, it's gonna add some time to the project.
We've got the contracts in place for the electrical company, and we're working on getting things approved from the other counties for their input financially, and everything seems to be a go there, so. Seems to be going quite smoothly so far, so. We started dealing with four other counties, it gets to be a lot of visiting and talking, but I think they're all on board, so. We're gonna draw contracts, we can do, so, that's in the process. I guess that's all I have, anything else from anybody else about something?
State Fair has hosted a, join us at the legislature, tell your state fair story, and why premium dollars are so important, January fourteenth, from one thirty to three in the Rough Rider Room, down at the Capitol.
Really, what are the hours on that again?
One thirty to three, and the premium dollars goes to, on all the empty entries, you know, the, the prizes that are awarded for HFA and open show classes. And I think these letters of appreciation from Mr. Connor should be, and, you know, Mike Connor, I think everybody has seen these letters of appreciation to Kevin and the staff who work for the U of the cemeteries, and then to their blade man, Gary Fenner, out of the Starkweather district out there, and he's done all the years for him. And Candy got a copy of those, and emailed Crystal to make sure that's for Kevin, and Gary gets a copy in their personnel files, so.
Yeah, not, not often we get nice letters like this, so.
Exactly, so, yeah, so, but that's all I had.
I wanna kinda tie in with Jeff, you know, the complaint on the roads over there, that, that has got to just be operator error, because I complained for years about our blade guy, and then, you know, he passed away, and we got a new guy, this new guy is doing phenomenal. I mean, he, he's got, he's got snow wing from here to the building over there, and then, you know, you get the letter about Gary, so, you know, he's obviously doing a good job. So I, I gotta think it's just, just the blade guy out there, I mean, he needs to be.
Can we get that blade guy to come down and work with the blade guy down here?
Oh, I was kidding, I was just on the way the other day, when I backed out of the driveway, you know, I was expecting the goat road to town. I had better than the highway, I mean, it was unbelievable, and then they were right back on it again, so, you know, I know Kevin gets a lot of grief, and so with, with the letter over Gary, and then I believe Greg Schwab is my new blade guy, I mean, I think he's doing a phenomenal job, so it's, it's just gotta be the guy. I mean, maybe, maybe somebody needs to, Greg or, or Gary need to get into blade with him one day and go out there and show him how it's done.
I think that would help, what do you think, Adam?
I'm sure.
We're up closer to that area.
I mean, I guess, I, I don't know if I have the same operators as up in that area, I don't think I do, 'cause my roads became windy enough, which is actually, so. And granted, you know, I don't have, and I do feel for Dennis from the aspect of there's a lot more water sitting around the roads up in that area, too, compared to mine, you know, mine when I get cattails, and it's really wet, too, gets to be kind of a little sticky, so I can understand where he's coming from, but mine's nice and clean and open right now, so it works pretty well.
I follow up on the complaint we had last summer over there north of Bartlett, and I was up that road this fall, and they did get it flattened out, got some of that crown knocked down, they, they didn't do a lot with the grass yet, but we really need to encourage Kevin to have the blade operator work on that grass, you know, in May, right?
Yeah, you're gonna do it then, you gotta, it takes time.
Don't wait till the grass is out, I. Get it, just get going, and then pull them in, you know.
It gets ugly before it gets better, when you do that.
Right, no matter when.
You wanna start everything out.
Aren't there some, some reclaiming type tools?
Yeah.
It's kinda like rototiller type things that kind of hold the edges in?
Yeah, and they just sit, sit down on the grass.
Do we have anything like that?
I thought we had some, we do.
Do we? 'Cause I, I just have never asked.
Again, that was down on my road last fall, I mean, they pulled all of the shoulders out.
'Cause I mean, maybe that's something, we're just not using it aggressively enough in certain places or something, I don't know, but I mean, you know, part of it too is, I mean, we, we have to continue to push to keep the roads in good shape, but, you know, some of these roads probably need some roadbed work.
Yeah.
And things like that, and it's just not getting done, 'cause the money's just not there.
Well, and some of that stuff, I think Kevin would do by the hour of your equipment rates, rather than, you know, including in the blading. 'Cause I mean, you can spend a couple of days on something like that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we have to just see, maybe, maybe some of the township officers aren't aware of some of the services we can provide, and they just have never utilized it, so maybe we need to get in front of the township officers and say, here, there's some of the stuff we can do, and show them some pictures or videos or whatever of those things in operation, maybe it's things they'd like to see done, you never know, so.
Maybe we should come up with a per mile rate, you know, and have it on the list, and see if the townships are in favor of using that, you know. You can't really put it on there as a, one of the six bladings, I don't believe, you know, you'd have to put it on there as a separate item, and then say, okay, I don't know what's a going rate to do something like that, but I know that would work over there north of Bartlett, it would help that road some more, because like these Dennis said, you know, over the years, twenty-five years of water, you know, them cattails are right to the edge of the road. You know, and it's dry now, them areas are dry, and there's, like you said, there's gravel down there. Sometimes they can pull that gravel up on the road and make use of it again, instead of.
And some, some of it's just not even water, it's just from years of encroaching, and then you just keep gravel in the middle of the road, and then the road just naturally narrows up, the road right off to me, that Fox Lake Road, I mean, it's probably got a couple, three feet of crown on each side that still has gravel on it with the grass, just because it's naturally just kind of worked its way, and it's, nobody's ever really complained, 'cause that was built up to run gravel when they were putting in all the missile silos, so the road's nice and wide anyway, so nobody's ever really worried, what have, but if you started with a narrow road and slowly encroached, I could see where it'd be a huge problem, and we just have to keep working and trying to keep roads in good condition, it's just.
Well, let's bring that up to Kevin, and, and have a line item on there that, you know, we can bring this reclamer out, or, I'm not quite sure if they call it a reclamer or what they call it, but it's on the, on the grader, I know it was on the graders, and they can go down there and.
I've just seen them before, I don't know.
And put a price on it, and put a price on it, what it costs.
Well, I guess you could do it by the hour for the first couple of times that you run the thing, and then you have a, you have a price per mile.
You'd have an idea how many miles you could cover in an hour, and what kind of cost it would be.
Right.
I think, remember over the past years, I thought we had one or two of the graders that can do this, I don't think they're all set up to do this, but one or two of them have the attachment that are the plumbing, hydraulic plumbing and stuff, to hook up and do this, so we should check with Kevin, and make, put that on the sheet, that we can do this also for this amount of money, whatever, come up with a price. So the option is there, and we might take away some of the pushback we get from township officers or residents of the county.
I think we make it pretty cheap enough, too, to encourage use, because if we've got it, we might as well use it, number one, and then we'll get them used to you, and if it works well.
Yep.
And, you know, it, it all comes down to the end of the day, the township's running a whole heck of a lot of money.
You're right.
So let's try to do our best to help keep the roads in good condition.
Yeah, that's right, work with them some more.
I mean, it will take more bladings to bring that, to work that material across, 'cause it's.
Yep.
You know, the grass will happen with, too, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna work on every road either, some of these roads, I mean, they're narrow, and it's just because there's no gravel on the edges, I mean, it's just a, they're just narrow roads to start with. Every road's gonna be a little bit.
Let's, let's try to get Kevin to do that, okay.
Will you guys let us know what, what comes of that?
Yeah. I think we should work on it here this winter, so we're ready for spring season, and we have that price out there, we should have it ready for the township officers, meaning they have what, end of March, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Be a good idea to have that option available, and explain it to them during that meeting, you know, and try to get it on the board to use, so.
Kevin might have a better, might have a better idea what timing to use for that, too, what time of year is best, 'cause I, I was thinking about, you know, it's gonna be out early, but I guess rain, June's usually pretty rainy in the early part, and might be better wait till after that, too, so.
If you need dry weather, it's a good time to do it.
Yeah.
If it's gonna rain four days straight, next, don't probably do it. Watch the weather for a gap.
In addition to all that, I, I still think that, that Mark's point there is repeating, which is if there is operator error going on, I mean, we, we don't wanna be paying for services that aren't happening, right?
Good point, Lucas, I think, you know, that's, that's a key to that, wow, if you get that wing down and get some speed. You know.
It's unbelievable how well that road has looked now, I mean, and not that, not that we ever really fought with our blade guy, but, you know, it was always like, when you pull that gravel back, you know, you always kind of had to nudge him along, and since we got the new one, like you said, I'm not sure if it's great or who it is, but whoever it is, is, is just doing a phenomenal job, it really is. The other day, when it snowed, I got to town, and once I hit town, that's when the roads got red.
Look at the calendar.
No, I like that, but it was true, I mean, I had, I drove my truck sideways all the way to town, no problem, you know.
Man, it was fun getting through downtown those couple of days after it snowed, it was unbelievable, never seen anything like it.
You'd be amazed, I was in Florida over the new year after, you know, it'd been a week after it snowed or whatever, and Broadway was down in basically one lane.
Really?
In spots, because they hadn't even, they had, there was still three, four feet of snow probably packed in on the front of all the parking spots, so whenever we'd parallel park, you kind of had to slow down and let somebody through, and it was, it was still nice.
Well, I know it's, I know it's a huge headache when it happens, it's hard to clean, but.
Yeah.
There was, you know, there were, there were big snow piles in the middle of the streets, you know, like that, that had been built up, and it's like you're weaving around, but in blind, you can't see what's coming from you, you know, unbelievable.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time worrying about moving snow, and then it melts. Every time I go moving snow, it's like, I'm wasting all this, I'm wasting all this time, and it's all gonna melt. I'm wasting all this time and it's all gonna melt, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's right, it takes a lot of fuel to move snow.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, any other announcements? Anything else, comments? I feel guilty. Regard.